Louis has those assignments. He told me that he has them and he'll give them to us when we get here as far as the proclamations and presentations, but we will all be given an assignment this week. A quick poll of the council members indicated that there are no consent calendar items that we wish to discuss at this time, but we do have a couple of agenda items that are on the public hearing. And so if we could have a brief staff presentation on both 18 and 19 in whatever order is easiest for our staff, a quick overview of the item, and then council members, I think, have questions.
Thank you Vice Mayor Daniels and council members. Good evening. My name is Maria Kadavid with the Planning Division, and I'm bringing to you as a study session item, two applications for the same site in the Cooley Station. If you know, the Cooley Station is a master plan of over 300 acres in the eastern part of the town, and this particular parcel that the request affects is parcel 16 located at the northeast corner of the railroad tracks and the record road. The request for a minor general plan amendment from the residential 3.5 to 5, 8 to 14 actually, to public facility institutional, and the corresponding rezoning of the same acreage from single-family detached to public facility to allow a charter school. That's the size, the physical location. The parcel was identified from the original rezoning of the master plan as reserved site for the Higley School District, which in 2010 indicated in writing to staff while processing another PAD amendment that they were not interested on the site. We had the visit of the charter school applicant and the Cooley family members, owners of the land, that they wanted to bring the educational school component to the master plan. Staff in the Planning Division doesn't have any issues with the concept of the land use and the rezoning. We asked the applicant to bring forward all the plans, subject to a technical review, to make sure that the development plan that is small in the big picture met all the town standards, and they did. The traffic study was discussed a couple of times, and they have come up into the latest revision accepted by the traffic division. And conditions in the ordinance will make the traffic impact study work well for this facility. The other comments that staff included, for your knowledge, where other agencies and the applicants have met with them and have responded in a satisfactory manner to staff reviews. That's all I have to say. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer. And also, I have traffic, Assistant Traffic Engineer with us, Leslie Hart, to answer any questions specific on traffic. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria, for that. Can you give us a brief summary of the Planning Commission's concerns on this so that we can take a good hard look at those?
Well, staff included the minutes in your packet, but to summarize that, it was a denial four to three, not the entire commission who was in agreement for the denial. And mainly, they brought up the fact that the applicant, they felt that it was too much capacity within the 2.3 acre site, and the second item was safety, or the perception of it being an elementary school through K, K through eight going next to the railroad layout alignment. So they mentioned that they didn't feel too comfortable for the school to go on that site. We all the time have noted that the school district chose that site to be a school when they were establishing in the area. In 2010, they decided not to go on this particular side. However, they have the school district offices and a high school right on the other side of the railroads. They do have on Higley Road, south of Vest Road or Street, another junior high school, and another high school on the west side of the same road. I talked to them this morning. They say, "Well, I mean, it didn't work for us at that location, but we have school facilities next to the railroad as well." The safety item was suggested or recommended by the commission that maybe the applicant could install a masonry wall along the alignment of the railroad, and we have not conditioned that, but we commented that that was one of the measures to mitigate possibly a danger of being with elementary school kids next to a railroad alignment.
What would staff's response be to the concern about the site being too small, if you will, or it being too intense for the use?
Staff recommends approval based on the fact that we reviewed, the technical review of the site plan, which traffic evaluation is part of it. The landscaping meets the requirements of the Gaywood Area and code requirements. The criteria and guides of the Gaywood Area in the general plan are met, and the elevations also that were submitted to us meet that vision that the Cooley family have for their architectural or guidelines, urban design component that they foresee for the entire area. So we did all that, and we feel that if we would have taken this application to the board, they would have approved it.
And one last question. Why is it that a rezone is required for the school? Is it not allowed in the SFD?
That's correct. Vice Mayor Daniels and Councilmember Peterson, it's not. In the single-family detached, unattached, the public facilities, schools are not permitted. I'm sorry. And it may be the fact that setbacks are in the single-family detached are zero to five, and in the attached are zero, and maybe that would impose residential development with smaller lots and minimal or zero setbacks to be too close to a school that although is not incompatible used to residential, maybe the operational activities may be a little bit of henuisals for the residences in that smaller scale.
I think that hits all the high points that I was concerned with. I will just note that, and we can't discuss the merits of it, but the question of whether or not schools should be allowed in all residential zoning districts is a question we might want to discuss as a council. So I'm going to try and pass something around about that, but we'll either do it or we won't. We'll see what happens.
Thank you. Thank you, Maria. Linda, I think, are you up for 19? Thank you.
Good evening, council members. This is a graphic of the zoning for the Heritage District. What is in blue is the Heritage Village Center zoning district. The text amendment that is before you, or will be on Thursday, is a text amendment for a limitation to the Heritage Village Center zoning district, which prohibits drive-through facilities in the area that is blue. Now, what is the actual text amendment as it went through several public hearings, both at the Redevelopment Commission and the Planning Commission, after review of six options in how to assess the amendment to the limitation, the one that was preferred by the Redevelopment Commission was to limit the use of drive-throughs on the north side of the Western Canal. Those three stars represent Burger King, Dairy Queen, and an oil change type facility. The discussion at the Redevelopment Commission was that this part of the community was different. It felt different. It looked different. It was, the sizes of the parcel were different than the actual urban core of the Village Center, which are very small lots, no parking on site for many, buildings right up to the street, entrance on both sides of the buildings. In this area, you will see that there is parking, existing drive-through coordination, circulation around the site. They felt comfortable that the continued use of the two existing drive-throughs and the conversion of a service bay to a drive-through was flexible for reinvestment and upuse in this part of the Heritage District. At the Planning Commission level, there was a 6-1 vote. There was not support to amend this limitation to allow the two drive-throughs to continue or to convert a service bay, because they felt that the vision should be for the entire Heritage District and that the section north of the canal should not be singled out with this text amendment. And as we discussed these options, six of them, there was also discussion about the goals in the general plan and the redevelopment plan, the statements of the vision statements for the Heritage District, and also the purpose statements for the Heritage Village Center zoning district. So it was a very complex discussion, and the public was also involved, supporting and opposing. Those who were in support at the commission level and at the public level felt that flexibility was important for reinvestment and upuse, and that this part of the community did feel and act different, and the infrastructure was adequate for several more decades, hopefully. Those who were opposed felt that if this area was different, maybe it deserves a rezoning north of the canal to be in a zoning district that did not need an amendment to a regulation. Some felt that the vision should hold true for all of the district, and there shouldn't be exceptions. So there was also some concern among those in opposition that the traffic would be increased and possibly have unsafe conflicts between pedestrians and vehicles. We've worked with our engineering department in traffic, and those issues have been resolved and would be accordingly with a design review application. The text amendment, in a nutshell, is coming forward with the text to allow the two existing drive-throughs to continue, service bay to be converted to a drive-through, to remain until the structure was remodeled or somehow rebuilt so the drive-through was no longer there, and that the use could only be for restaurant use, and it would require a use permit. A use permit is, would have to be reviewed by the Redevelopment Commission, and again, by the Planning Commission for approval. So there still is another process besides design review if the limitation were amended.
Linda, in reading and understanding some of the comments from the Planning Commission, there were some statements about maybe this area does not really fit into the Heritage District. Talk to us about if that were to be changed, what's the process, and is there any discussion that, along those lines, that would be pertinent to Thursday night?
Thank you, Mayor. There was some discussion regarding this area feeling different. The speed limit is different. There hasn't been recent improvements in this area. The west side is vacant, which we all know will be beautiful someday and connect to the southern side of the Western Canal as a bridge, using the Western Canal as a pedestrian link between those projects. On the east side, the infrastructure is 20, 30 years old. I myself visited Dairy Queen, and my daughter was a year old, so I know it's been there for three decades, and I expect it to be there for three more decades. And I think that over time, businesses that do want to come in and reinvest will begin to add the character of the materials and landscaping and sidewalks improvements and signage that will bring these parts of the community together, along with the town's efforts through unique funding to make that happen. I think that in order for this area to be disconnected from the Heritage District would be a shame, because we have a wonderful opportunity to have a great development on that large vacant parcel, and we also have plans for connection. The bridge is already there. You can see it. Maybe I can put a dot on the screen by holding it. There's already a bridge there to allow that connection. The Western Canal has been built wonderfully to allow that connection for pedestrians and bicycles. And if we wanted to go down the path of a rezoning, but yet keep it in the Heritage District boundary, that could be considered, and that process would be similar to this, which would be a citizen initiation, a citizen review, Redevelopment Commission and Planning Commission recommendation, and Town Council approval of a rezoning. For instance, a shopping center zoning district might be appropriate for the built environment on the east side, which would accommodate all the uses that are there today, plus others.
And typically, we'll try and have our public hearing items discussed at the formal meeting, because this is a topic where we've received a lot of information, and information is still coming. One question that was asked, and I think you just answered it, but I'll confirm, on Thursday night, we do not have the option, because the Heritage District is defined as a district. We don't have the option to say, "Let's just make this change for this northeast part." I assume we don't have that option. Is that correct?
Mayor, if I understand your question, are you asking that we would, that you would recommend that type of change at a rezoning level with this text amendment?
Well, it's more, some of the concerns expressed in the southern part of what would be considered downtown that has been in place for a long time is concerns about some of these changes that might impact that area. Some have even said, "It makes sense for the northeast part, but not for the southern part," and so that is one question. Someone asked me, and I said, "I don't think we have that option," and that is the option that, again, is could we just make these changes for the northeast part of what is currently Heritage District, realizing that we could make some changes in the future to what is considered Heritage District. But I don't think, based on the way this has been presented to the neighbors and to the community, that we even have that option.
Mayor, maybe I could clarify. I did not make that point in my brief presentation. The text amendment is very specific and only affects property within the Heritage Village Center zoning district that is north of the canal. I showed the first frame of the large blue area that is the Heritage Village Center, and then I quickly moved to the frame that only showed the properties north of the Western Canal. So if you did approve this text amendment, it would only affect those properties on the north side of the canal and not all of the other areas that were shown on the first slide in blue.
So one of the concerns has been that this will impact what could be happening south of the canal, and you've just answered it, saying that this is not impacting that area.
That's correct.
Okay. And to help us as a council, do we have some other questions? Let me ask a procedural question. So it's a public hearing, and on Thursday night, the typical discussion, or the typical process would be for you to come up and give the overview to the council, so it's also available for the public. And then we would have, if individuals have requested to speak on that item, and then at some point, if the applicant wished to speak, we would also make that available. And I think they do. There was one question, and Kelly, this might be directed towards you. There is a PowerPoint that is available that the council has received, and if the applicant had two speakers, and they each took three minutes apiece, which is our standard time, do they fill out forms to speak in the public hearing, or are they already given that option as an applicant?
Generally, the applicants do not fill out forms, and you, as the council, have the discretion to allow one or two people or more to speak on behalf of the applicant.
So if, in preparation for Thursday night, to give them some feedback, and also for Linda, if they wanted to present a PowerPoint, and they divided it, and I realize in that case, the applicant, we don't necessarily have the clock ticking, but it's still a general guideline that we'd want them to try and show their comments in about three minutes. That would be appropriate to give two speakers, three minutes apiece, and roughly have about six minutes.
Mayor, that would be appropriate.
Mayor, just to clarify, though, isn't the town the applicant, or, so just so we know that...
That's true. In this case, that's...
There is no case before us from an applicant.
Yes, I apologize. The town is the applicant. If you want to allow property owners who may be impacted by this text amendment to speak, you may do that.
So that, I think Councilmember Cooper would come back to, it would be appropriate for them to fill out a request to speak form.
Thank you, Councilmember Cooper, for clarifying.
Councilmember Peterson.
And I looked at legal counsel on this. Can you talk to us why, about why this isn't spot zoning?
Mayor Lewis, Councilmember Peterson, spot zoning is, say you have a residential area, and you go in, and you were to designate one lot as commercial. That truly would be spot zoning. Where you have an amendment, you're amending a zoning district, even though it may affect a limited number of properties, which it will in this case, it's not spot zoning. It is appropriate legal zoning. The decision on whether it's appropriate for the area, of course, is a policy decision for this council to determine, but it's not unlawful to proceed in the way it's being presented tonight as a text amendment. You're not going in and picking out one piece in the middle of an area that would be inappropriate and designating it something completely different.
I may be asking a question you won't know the answer to, but do you know why spot zoning is illegal? Why would that be illegal?
You know, ironically, I've heard many claims that spot zoning is illegal. It really is just specialized legislation, where you're treating property that is similarly situated to a number of other properties, where you're giving it special treatment and not giving other similarly situated properties that same special treatment. That's what makes it illegal, because the whole purpose of having a zoning code is to give property owners advanced knowledge of what they're legally allowed to do with their property, and it's consistent. If you have property in this area, here's what you can do with it, or you have to have a certain size and all of that. But it allows you to be consistent in your application of zoning regulations.
Councilmember Cook, there were just two items that have been requested so far, 18 and 19, and we've covered 18, and so this is just finishing 19. Do you have anything on 19 that...
Just the language, that it really is affecting everything north of the canal, because I do know that there's other properties within the Heritage District that does have kind of a drive-through. I know there's a kind of a car repair garage kind of in the southern part. I just wanted to make sure the language is north of the canal.
That is correct, and I look to Ms. Edwards for clarification on that.
Yes, Mayor, and Councilmember Cook, the language is on the first sentence, located north of the Western Canal. And so it's there.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, I, I'm not going to argue with the lawyers. I'm sure it's not spot zoning, but the concept behind spot zoning may apply. That doesn't mean I don't want to let them do what they want to do with their own property. I do. I just think this may not be the best way to approach it. So I'd like to look at other options, like talk about option one. I don't know how staff feels about, actually, I think I do, of just removing the limitation on the drive-throughs. The rezone is certainly another approach that I think would be acceptable, so.
And Linda, from a big-picture perspective, I realize I want to stay in the scope of what we're talking about, but a big-picture perspective, the, when you had the map up, and maybe bring that back up, when you even go back one picture, okay, that one, let's see. Yes, that one, that's the one. When you look at the east side, that's really our discussion, and that's buildings that have been there for quite some time. And I am with you on Dairy Queen. When we moved here 27 years ago, that was the hotspot and the place to visit in Gilbert. And we look to the west side, and there's a lot that can happen there. And so right now, from a planning department perspective, is the west side we want to keep in line with the rest of the Heritage District, because there is nothing there?
Mayor, I think that when staff looked at the western canal, the north side of the western canal, we looked at the existing businesses, and two were drive-through. So we felt that they both had adequate parking and maneuvering and safe circulation on site for a drive-through. As we're south of the western canal, if someone did want to do a drive-through, it would be very difficult. Keep in mind also that the Heritage Village Center zoning district prohibits new access to Gilbert Road, so there would not be a drive, a new drive-through with access on Gilbert Road. All the lots south of the western canal are quite small, and we truly encourage a very intense type of use where the majority of those small sites would be building. They would not have an opportunity to put a drive-through and a facility or parking on site. So when we looked at the north side of the canal, we felt that even though the west side is mostly vacant, we still have a user that over time can continue to have a restaurant use with safe access.
And the thought of changing the boundaries of Heritage District, from a planning department perspective, are there thoughts that you could share on that?
The redevelopment plan created the boundary for the Heritage District, which is the same for the Heritage District and the Character Area in the general plan. So I think that because it's been formulated in that way since 1990, and the business owners who I've talked to personally in this area want to continue to be part of the Heritage District, and they want to give to the Heritage District and feel they're a part of it.
Thank you. So, anything else on 19? Councilmember Daniels, thank you for getting this off and running. I was not here to make this request, and it would be Agenda Item 16, and I think that, Kelly, you'll be the one that I can have some dialogue with on behalf of the rest of the council. We have, as a council, and this is an estimate, probably about 100 liquor license requests a year, and I, we're usually, I'm more about 100% approval rate. We have, on occasion, had requests on sampling, and this is a council gen item that has five liquor license requests, two are requests for sampling, and we haven't had many, so for probably four of you, this is new information unless you had followed a concern I had raised a couple of years ago. And... No. Okay, thanks. What I had tried to express, and trying to do a better job this time, is that I think as a council and as a community, one reason why typically 100% liquor licenses are approved is that's part of our society. It's helping promote business, and it's just in our culture. And what I had raised was a concern of liquor sampling in more of what would be considered a family store, probably consistent with a policy we put in place a few years ago of not having alcohol in our public parks. And so, to the council, this is an example where 17, Agenda Item 17, to me, is a request for sampling at a store that is designated, and the right store to have sampling, where that's their business. 16, and this is where I want to be careful, because I want all businesses to thrive and not get in the way of that, but I just have the opinion that, for a family store, that they'll do better if they don't have sampling. And of course, they disagree with that, or else they wouldn't have put in the application. But I wanted to point out to the council that if, and Kelly, I'm about to ask you a question, give me some guidance, but for the rest of the council to hear off, on Thursday, if I were to vote no on 16, it is not that I don't want the business to succeed. It's just that that is a belief I have, and therefore, I would not be supporting it in a family store. But again, I'm about 100% on voting yes on the liquor licenses and having it in our community, but if you all of a sudden hear me vote no, that's why. Now comes the question, for clarification for the rest of the council, there is, there are three options, and just a reminder, we are not approving. This is where the state liquor license department, they're the ones that approve this, and it's simply municipalities have a chance to recommend or... simply municipalities have a chance to recommend or to deny, or the third option is not recommend. And so my first question, Kelly, is on those three options, option three says if you don't recommend, there has to be a hearing. Option two, if you deny, and so in fairness to the business that made this request, to still make it easy for them if they chose to appeal or take the next step, what's easiest for them?
Well, obviously, if I may, Mayor...
Realizing number one option is easiest for them, but if, out of two and three, which one is easiest?
I don't believe either one is easiest for the, I think they're probably equal, because they will have a hearing at the state liquor department board, and they will review whether it is appropriate to issue the sampling license or not. So I don't believe procedurally it makes a difference.
And item to the denial, we do need to give a reason. What are some reasons that would be appropriate that would make sense?
Mayor Lewis, again, it's within the discretion of the council, but I think your concern that this would be occurring in a place where families go to shop, and there are kids around, and they're observing this, that would be a perfectly valid reason. If you believe the store does not have an appropriate place to conduct sampling, where they can kind of segregate it off and monitor who is coming forward, that would be another reason. If it's a store that's had problems, and I'm not implying in any way that any of these have had problems, but if it's a store that's had problems maybe with selling to minors or things like that, that would be a valid reason. Those are just merely examples.
Thank you. So either two or three, they would still have the option to appeal, and they would need to appeal on both?
And it's not, if I can clarify, Mayor, it's not really an appeal, because you're just a recommending body.
Right, but they would be doing the appeal to the state?
Yes, the state liquor board would have a hearing there.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had. I don't know if, Councilmember Cook?
I know in the past, there usually is a diagram that shows kind of where everything is at. I noticed that for this particular agenda item, I don't see any type of diagram for 16 as to where the sampling would be taking place. I don't know if it's going to be in a secure area where it will limit minors from having access to, but I know in the past, so if the staff could provide that for Thursday, I'd appreciate that.
And just a reminder, if I may, Mayor Lewis, Councilmember Cook, and we can provide the details at Thursday night's meeting, there are pretty stringent requirements that's set forth in the statutes for entities to follow that are going to be doing the sampling. They have to have it in a place where they can kind of segregate it off. They have to monitor who's participating, and it's a very small amount they're allowing.
And it's interesting, I'm glad that question came up. The last sampling request that we had did appear to be a family store, and I went there, and it was kind of split into two. And half the store was definitely a liquor and wine store, and they had a separate room for the sampling, and I thought that was appropriate. So that, you know, if there is something that would like that, that would be, I have not gone in, I've been in the store before, it's a great store, but if there is something that, you know, might cause me to change my mind, that would be helpful.
And we can pass that on to the applicant, and I'll have the list of what they're obligated to follow if they do the sampling.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on 17? So for the study session, we had two agenda items, and unless we wanted to go to number two, that puts us in a spot where we're almost done. I do have one future meeting item I can bring up, but is there anything else on the agenda items that you've had second thoughts on that you wanted to bring up? The future meeting item, in February, we have on the calendar a February 12 state of the town. And has been discussed is that at the chamber on Thursday, February 7, we're going to be having a state of the business, and the thought would be, with some town leadership involved yesterday, that we could potentially have a state of the town that same night on Thursday, February 7, probably start our meeting at 6:30. And this year, it's going to be a digital state of the town, first time that's ever happened. It's kind of exciting. We'll see what that looks like when it's done in a couple of weeks. And so currently, we're going that direction, so that's new information for each of you. That would mean that your Tuesday, February 12, we would cancel that meeting and then just do it on a regular night. So there's some positives to that, but I didn't want you to get surprised, and so if there are any discussions on that, we'll take it. Otherwise, just assume that's the direction we'll go. Okay, thank you. The one, speaking of state of the town, one other item that will help, for clarification, tomorrow night, we are doing interviews. We have been invited to Queen Creek State of the Town. How many are currently planning on being at the interviews from 6 to 9? And then you'll be back and forth with the Redevelopment Commission. Okay, all right. That's the information that will be helpful. On that note, I'm ready to end the study session. And please?
Your assignments?
Your assignments?
All assignments. Proclamations, guys?
Your assignments?
Oh, thank you. And, you know, at first, I thought you meant the new council liaison assignments, which in the spirit of current events, I'll just mention more to town leadership that the town council, we have received those assignments, and with our town leadership, if we can just make sure that we are merging, and if there are meetings coming up, town leadership, I assume has copies of the new town assignments, town council assignments, and I think that's off and running, but I just mentioned that again. And then specifically for Thursday night, the scouts, Councilmember Cook, if you could take leadership on that. Agenda item number one, the pillar of the month, Councilmember Taylor. Agenda item number two, the proclamation, mentoring awareness month, Councilmember Daniels. Agenda item number three, the recognition of the Colts for winning the NFL regional tournament, Councilmember Ray. And then agenda item number four, unless you wanted to talk about the 49ers-Talkings game, Councilmember Ray, coming up this weekend, I'll go to number four. I'm sure as a town that we're cheering for the 49ers. That's my understanding. Okay. Agenda item number four, presentation to Eagles scout Casey Benson, I've been asked to do that. Any questions on the assignments? Thank you for that reminder. Did we miss anything else? We, as a council, then, will be back in place a few minutes before 6, and the special session tonight will begin at 6:00 p.m. Study session adjourned. So the character of the month.